All right, we will call the meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call, please? Mr. Need?
Here.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Here.
Ms. Catalina?
Here.
Mrs. Egan? Mrs. Crane?
Here.
Mr. Hire?
Here.
Mrs. Horst?
Here.
Mrs. Egan sends her apologies. She's dealing with a medical issue tonight and was unable to join us. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community hearing. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Items 3 and 9. Item 2 is approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Hire?
Yes.
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan? Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes.
The motion carries. Item 3, if citizens request to address the Board, you are given two opportunities to address the Board. Under Item 3.1, you can request to address the Board on any topic that's on tonight's agenda, and under Item 9, you are welcome to address the Board on any topic. When making comments, please state your name and address and direct your comments to Mrs. Kelly Horst, President. Each person may speak, thank you, for up to two minutes. Per established procedures, the Board does not respond to questions or interact with the Speaker during public comment. Great, I can see we have three people who have signed up to address the Board this evening, and all of those will fall under Item 9. Obviously, if anyone does decide that they would like to address the Board, there's additional sign-up sheets tonight, and so feel free to go ahead and fill that out, and we can add you when we get to Item 9. Item 4 is superintendent update. I'll turn it over to Dr. Ryan.
Thank you, President Hertz. First of all, for us, for those this Tennessee evening, I'd like to wish Happy Valentine's Day to everybody in our crowd and our community. Even though it was a little bit different this year, we continue to get more back sense of normalcy across our elementary buildings with kids exchanging their cards, just as we always remember, and having a little bit of that spirit, which we appreciate. That goes kind of into my also good news in terms of a couple items related to COVID. One of them is that our district current case rates have been pretty steady to now we're down below 10 cases. It's been pretty steady on a daily count. As some drop off, we pick up some more, but it's bottoming out in my mind. And to that end, I want to thank our President Horst for her work alongside myself and our North Oakland County superintendents who came together to petition over the last several weeks, month, Oakland County Health Division, I know as many of our community members have, to make sure that their voices are heard, that we really wanted an opportunity for local control in terms of reviewing our COVID data and our protocols and make them representative of our community and what we feel is safe for our kids and staff. We've done that along the way, and this past week, this Friday, I should say, the Oakland County Health Division announced that they were going to suspend their mask order on the 28th of this month. I was happy to hear that. I wish it would have been immediately revoked to local control for us to discuss as a superintendent and Board team up here of our next moves, because I really do feel like we're in a position to not say that everything is perfect moving forward on everything, but it is time in my mind to move forward with respect to this and to a new normalcy that COVID is part of our life, but it's not something that's going to control or put us in a position to where we need to mask our kids on a daily basis. So, that being said, you know, we do appreciate the peace, at least from my perspective, and I believe from our support of our Board of Education, that we want to have that choice for families as put in our communication on Friday. We feel like it's an individual family choice. We're definitely not going to make anybody feel bad or less than if they choose to pursue that right now, but that's kind of where it lies in terms of State for Clarkson Community Schools. It's been a long road over the last several years. It's hard to believe that we're already almost two years into our struggles in working along with this, and I really do believe we're at the beginning of the end or the end as we move into the spring, and I'm hopeful as we move into spring, summer, into next school year. We have a very good record, except for a couple snow days we've had here and a couple days that we had to deal with threats, but we have a continued commitment to keep our kids in school every day. That's where we think they belong, and we're going to keep striving for that as normal as possible as we can moving forward. So, I appreciate the community and our Board in terms of support as we continue to move forward and take it day by day and continue to try to push forward the best way we can. On even brighter notes, you're going to hear tonight, although it seems like it hasn't been, in some cases it feels like it was yesterday and some it feels like it was a couple months ago, if you look at the incidences in Oxford, many as part of our community as we reacted and tried to absorb what it meant for Clarkston. And I have to put it to our Board and our administrative team, we've been working diligently ever since then to not only look at the efforts that we made over the last several years in terms of school safety, but we wanted to look at, you know, next level, how can we move Clarkson forward into a way that we feel that we're doing everything we absolutely can to make the most possible environment safe for our staff and our students. To that end, tonight you're going to hear a presentation by a security firm that we have review all of our, every single building, every hallway, every corner of Clarkson Community Schools to provide a report on not only how we're doing as far as physical safety of the facilities themselves, how they're set up and designed, how we carry out school, but also the protocols and things we have for school safety in terms of response to different types of threats. This firm reviewed all those in terms of kind of a holistic way, and they're going to provide this evening kind of report out not only what we've done, but where we can kind of go from here. In addition, this evening feeds right into a professional learning day that we have scheduled for February 23rd, which will be more work refreshing with our Alice intruder protocols, how staff and students respond. That'll be with the staff that day, and it'll transcend into work that we'll be doing with the students over the next couple months, and this is ongoing. This is not new. This is something we have. We want to make sure that we're always at the top of our game. Also related that day, it's not enough just in having those type of safety protocols. We're also going to be doing work with our staff on the psychological components of how to support students not only in the midst of a crisis, but in the aftermaths of that as we feel like that's an important aspect to continue our own professional learning, that we can be able to address both small, micro type either tragedies or challenges, but also look at in a wholesale, what happens if, and how do we react? And I think that's got to be a constant conversation with our school district, with our staff and our leadership. So, those are big events moving on. Couple other things on a real positive side. Next week, the CHS Drama Club is going to do Disney's Newsies on the February 17th, 18th, and 19th at 7:00 PM, and a matinee on February 20th, and I want to make sure the arts are recognized, and I've seen and met with students and seen the work that they're putting in over at the high school to put this production on, and if you have an opportunity to go see it, definitely bring your family. It's going to be a great show. Finally, we have Secondary Curriculum Night that will take place on Clarkson High School on Thursday, February 24th, beginning at 6:00 PM. This will be an opportunity for parents of incoming junior high and high school students to hear about the many program offerings we have in these schools, including Renaissance and Clarkson Virtual. Reason I bring it to your attention this evening is kind of a new way of looking at it more, again, holistically and seeing options so that parents can not only see the immediate spot where their children could be entering into the secondary, but kind of get a little pathway and understanding of the bigger program opportunities that are afforded across the entire breadth of our 6th through 12th grade program. So, I think that'll be a very good night for parents to get what aspects they might want to explore and to have some great conversations with their kids moving on. So, thank you, President Hertz.
Thank you. And in the spirit of Valentine's Day, making you all come out on a holiday, we have some treats for you at the back of the room, so please feel free to enjoy a suite while you sit here on the second month in a row where I've made everyone come on a national holiday to a Board meeting. We'll move on to presentation items. 5.1 is our school safety review and threat and risk assessment, and so, Mrs. Kimmel, do you want to say a few words about the process, or would you like Mr. Russell to go ahead and start? Okay. Very good. Okay, well, welcome Jason Russell from SCC Consultants. Thank you, sir, for being here on Valentine's Day and sharing with us what you've learned about Clarkson Community Schools and your recommendations.
Probably saved me some money on gifts, so I appreciate you guys. I just told my wife I had to work. I had no, I got a good excuse. So, first of all, I want to thank the Board, thank the superintendent and the staff for selecting our company to do the safety review for the district. I'll just give you a quick background of the company. I started this company in 2012. My background is I was a Secret Service agent, and I was working with schools even as an agent doing threat assessments and safety assessments on schools. We work with about 60 districts here in Michigan, public school districts, and other 20 or 30 private school groups across the state of Michigan, and work with several, probably close to 1,000 school districts across the country. We're one of the largest kind of assessment-specific security consulting companies. We're also a primary provider for SETSEG, which is the public insurance company, public school insurance company, and we do reviews on incidents, and we often get called in, including the recent incident locally here. I conducted the review on that incident just before actually coming here and doing the safety and security review here at Clarkston. I'll start by saying that the way we do a safety and security assessment is holistic, so we're looking at kind of the layers of security. So, we're looking at everything from physical security to policy and procedure, but also how do those things kind of fit together? You can have the right physical security, but if you don't use it correctly, you know, you're losing some of your value of your investments. So, we spend a lot of time looking at a very kind of granular level, kind of a nitpicky level, but to try to really see if there's any places where improvements could be made in safety and security and just overall processes related to those. So, we spent, myself and Mark Connolly, who was also a former Secret Service agent, Mark Connolly was actually in charge of all the physical security at the White House, so you had, you know, two people in the district that have a pretty good background in terms of security and safety, and also obviously working with schools around the country. I'll tell you that, like I said, we work with a lot of districts, and whenever we come into a district, it's always a clean slate. We never know what we're starting with, and, you know, we come in with a kind of an open mind, and then we work with the district to kind of see where they are and what they need and go forward. I'll have to, I'll compliment everybody that we worked with. The staff was great. Jessica West, the superintendent's staff, all the administrators of the schools were extremely cooperative. Everybody really had the best interest of the district and the kids in mind when we were talking through things. There was no hesitation to share information. It was really an open dialogue, which I think is refreshing for us. One of the things that I'm always looking for when I'm working with a district is the climate, you know, what is the climate of that district? And one of the unique perspectives that I have, because I work with so many districts, is I have kind of, I see so many different styles of leadership, and especially when it comes to administrators, and I was impressed without exception with what I saw here, just the interactions with the kids. I was extremely impressed with your school resource officers. Both of them were really what I think kind of exemplifies what you want, which is not just a law enforcement presence, but also kind of a mentor and somebody who's there to develop relationships, which is really impressive. You know, I was telling the group when I was working, I have a standard kind of for assessments, and the standard is, I have two kids that are still in public schools, and my standard is what I send my kid to that school. That's kind of where my, that's the first thing I think of when I'm done, and without question, I think this would be a district that I would be extremely comfortable sending my kids to. I can say that, and talking to Mark, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about the findings and really going over the district as a whole, and we kind of always rank schools. Where does this school kind of fall in terms of, or this district fall in terms of schools we've assessed? And what we're finding now, obviously, post-Oxford, is the schools that probably really need the most help often don't ask for it. It's usually the schools that are really doing a great job but want to do better, and I would say Clarkston is probably one of the best examples of that. I would definitely rank it within the top 10% of all the districts that we've assessed nationwide in terms of overall preparation. Every school has various, you know, opportunities for improvement, so we did make some recommendations. I won't go through the whole intro, but basically when we're reviewing, we're looking at kind of a lot of different elements that relate to safety and security. So, we're looking at the physical side, like I said, we're looking at policies, we're looking at procedures, and then we're spending time with administrators and stakeholders at all of the schools, really talking through kind of fine details, you know, to make sure that everything has been considered, and really that's, in most schools, that's where you find the gaps, or maybe the lack of clarity in a particular policy or procedure or an element that you have for security. And that was sometimes the case here, but like I said, overall, you know, we have districts that we can find a lot of stuff really easily, and then there's some districts where we really have to get kind of nitpicky. This was a nitpicky district, and that's a good thing. That means you had the big stuff already done. One of the things that I think, as we look at the summary of some of the findings, you know, I think, having reviewed incidents, training is such a big piece of responding to any type of situation, and I think that, I know that you're in Alice District, and I know that there's some upcoming trainings in terms of Alice. One of the impressions that Mark and I both got was that the staff understand Alice, they understand the concepts. I think, and we talked to the SROs about this as well, I think they have to clarify a little bit better how the options work. So, if you're familiar with Alice, Alice, like any other best practice active shooter training, gives you an options-based approach, right? It's basically like run, hide, fight, if you've ever heard that. But what we noticed about, in talking to some of the staff and the administrators, is I think a lot of the staff believe that it's sequential, right? So, I first try to run. If I can't run, I hide. If I can't hide, I fight. That's actually not what it means. It means I take my set of circumstances and I choose the best, you know, choose the best option, given all the different variables that exist. So, I think it was kind of a minor detail, but we talked to, we spent some time with the school resource officers who are going to be doing the training on the 23rd, really getting them to understand that what was, what the staff were appearing to do is they were prioritizing one response over the others, even if it wasn't going to be the best response. And where it was coming out to light oftentimes was, you'd have a teacher on the second floor said, "Well, I want to be able to evacuate, so I want a ladder that I can climb down," and, you know, things like that. The practicality of that is not, it's not reasonable. So, we spent a lot of time talking about making sure that in the training, they really clarified the options so that people understand that it's not choose your favorite, it's choose the best one for your circumstances, and part of your circumstances are where am I in the building, how old are the kids I'm with, and a variety of other things that would come into play. Any questions about that one? And I'll try to move through these pretty quickly. You have great technology in the district. You have an alert technology, these buttons that are in every school. There's just kind of a general, there needs to be more clarity surrounding what the buttons do, and maybe more importantly, what they don't do. So, a question we asked every school we went to is, what do these buttons do? And for the most part, there was a general understanding, but we want to make sure that everybody understands exactly what they do. What, who do they notify? What doors do they lock? Do they, do they shut off the key cards? Like, does it interfere with the PA system? All the different things that this technology that you've deployed does, you need to understand at a very fine detail level, because anything you do is going to have consequences, right? So, if you push the button, you lose the PA system, the ability to access the PA system. So, we wanted the staff to really understand, especially administrators, to understand what each individual piece of technology does, so that they can determine when it's appropriate to deploy that technology. For instance, the, you have an Alice button. The Alice button disables, you know, disables key card readers in some areas. So, I wanted the staff to really understand if the person is in the building, what is the value of disabling card readers, right? Is it, because they're already inside, and are we now preventing somebody else from being able to easily gain entry? So, I think building some clarity around those things, and that shouldn't be too difficult to do. You have, you had really good emergency flip charts in your classrooms previous. You kind of updated your emergency plan, and there was an intent to move away from the old flip charts and move to the new flip charts, which I think was a poor, I think was a, not a poor decision, how do I say this? I think you could still utilize the investment that you made in the flip charts and just take the information from the new plan and put it in those flip charts, because they were far more robust than the flip charts you're using now. The new flip charts don't have tabs on them, so it's really difficult to find information. The old flip charts were really user-friendly, so I think just taking the information from the new plan and putting it in the old flip charts, you save your investment, because I'm assuming that those were not cheap. Classroom door locks, this is an issue we see everywhere. I think just having a pretty consistent policy in terms of how the classroom doors should be. The other thing is looking forward in terms of capital improvements, maybe looking towards a simpler lock system where the teachers can use a thumb lock, and they'll be, and it'll have an indicator, so you'll be able to see if the door is locked from across the classroom. That would be something you may want to look into considering. We talked about, yeah, the only way right now to confirm the door is locked is to test the handle from the outside, which we don't want teachers to do. So, what we've recommended is the doors stay locked. They can keep the doors open to facilitate movement in and out of the classrooms, but at some point, I think, and we're going to talk in a few minutes here about some other capital improvements, looking at a little bit of a better lock system for those interior classroom doors. What you have now is perfectly safe. It's perfectly well within best practice, but I think as you move forward with some more improvements. And one of the things that I think a district like Clarkston is able to do is be a leader on safety, not a follower, and I think in many ways you're doing that, and I would look to continue to do that, be an early adopter in some of the things, in the new technologies that are coming out there. We talked about some of those at the end of this report. Evacuation, just making sure that you've made contact with any place you're going to go. I think there was some of that, but it wasn't really necessarily that clear. As you're moving through your bond projects, considering, you know, I work a lot on bond projects, and it's always amazing to me that we have all these new renovations of schools and new vestibules and brand-new schools, and you have food service consultants, and you have audio consultants, but there's never a security consultant. Security is often a big piece of those projects, so it's something you may want to consider talking to your architect about. After, you know, most emergency planning for schools really focuses on kind of that school day, so we just recommended some resources be devoted for planning, and especially training staff that might be here during after-hours events, so athletic staff, you know, people that could have responsibility for kids that are not just teachers. I think, obviously, for obvious reasons, we focus really heavily on those kind of, those classroom teachers and staff, but there's a lot of people that have responsibility for kids that aren't necessarily teachers, that probably need some type of planning and training, so looking at that. We talked about updating some of your emergency supplies. You know, the classrooms had these buckets that were kind of a big deal five years ago. You know, we talked about these lockdown buckets and all that stuff. You did have some great supplies in them that are really necessary. You had some Stop the Bleed kits, which I think are fantastic. We just recommend that you can keep the buckets. We're going to send a list to the district of some increased supplies. It would include things like Mylar blankets. We also recommended some of the Stop the Bleed kits in common areas of the school, so instead of just in the classroom, because obviously unfortunately, sometimes things happen in the hallways, and if the classroom doors are locked and all your turnip kits are in the classrooms, then you have a need for them in the hallways, which has happened, then you don't have one. Number nine, we just made a recommendation for, obviously, kids are communicating via social media. A lot of the threats that we see are social media-related threats. Most schools don't monitor social media in real time, even though it's perfectly okay to do that. Open source social media, you can monitor. Many organizations do it, but it is sometimes useful to be able to target monitoring, which means if you have a specific concern, to be able to go to a resource and say, "I want you to track this specific issue," and they can oftentimes be able to provide some clarity on those issues. For instance, you know, I responded to Oxford about, within an hour of that event, and we started monitoring some of the social media elements of that. We're able to gather quite a bit of information within the first couple hours that proved pretty useful to the district. We have analysts that do that. There's several companies that perform those types of services. Visitor management, we just recommend, you know, kind of keeping a consistent practice with that. You do have technology at some of the schools for visitor management. I just think you have to keep it a little bit more consistent. You have a fantastic camera system, but I don't think you're, I don't think the staff know how to use it to its full capability. You have a Ferrari camera system that you don't really take out of first gear. So, I think getting a good level of training on it so that people understand all the functionality. There are people that do, but my general impression was that they know the basic functions, but it's, and it's not the administrator's fault, it's not the district's fault. Quite frankly, it's the vendor's fault. They should be making sure that you understand all the different functionality of those camera systems, because you've invested in a great system that can do a lot of different things, but if you don't know how to use it, then you're only using, you know, you're not using it to its full capabilities. Last thing we talked about is just considering, you know, I think a district like Clarkston needs to be looking ahead, and like I said, be in the leader in, in safety and security. Early adopter, being an early adopter in safety and security sometimes is a scary thing to do, because you're saying, "We're going to, we're not going to copycat every other district. We're going to take a step ahead, and we think this is where safety and security is going next." And I think considering some of your capital improvement projects, ways to do that, whether it be increasing some of the analytic function of your cameras, looking at maybe an advanced alert system. There's several out there that kind of allow a school district or a school to be able to alert for danger very quickly. Possibly looking at some weapon detection, building envelope protection, additional door security, we talked about that, and then there's some new advanced weapon detection technology out there that allows cameras to identify weapons. There are some new, they're not metal detectors, they're concealed weapon detectors. So, there's a lot of different new technologies that are coming out there, and I think as part of your capital improvement projects, maybe considering taking that next step in terms of looking in that direction. The other thing I think I would mention is cameras on the buses, which I don't think we have in here, but it is something you might want to consider. You have cameras on your buses currently. So, just, just as an idea, in security, you never want to be an outlier. You want to kind of always be either in with the group or you want to be ahead of it. So, cameras on buses, you're not an outlier at this point, but it may be something you're going to want to consider, and that would be certainly a capital project that you could invest in in terms of your next bond project or whatever you look for funding in the future. But like I said, overall, excellent district. You know, I was impressed with everything. We really had to kind of dig deep to find issues. The report that we've issued to the district is a little bit more lengthy, but once again, it's really a nitpicky report, like we're kind of, we were digging for, to try to really almost make it perfect, and I think there was a lot of willingness and openness amongst the whole district to kind of provide information, answer questions. Everybody seemed, you know, one of the things that we often run into, and it's okay, is apprehension on the school resource officers for a firm like ours to come in. Your school resource officers were fantastic. No, I mean, perfectly helped out as much as they could, provided information, you know, we shared ideas, and I thought that was pretty refreshing, because I don't see it everywhere. So, I think you have, you're really lucky with the school resource officers that you have, and then also, you know, just the administrators and everybody else to a person was really very helpful.
Will you entertain some questions and discussion from the Board?
Trustees, anyone have anything for our consultant? I actually had just a couple, if you don't, if you don't mind. There were a couple of things in there that I thought were really interesting. There was something in there about, when you were talking about the buttons and the PA system, and I think I read something in the report, which you did share with all of us, about two minutes. There was something that shuts down for two minutes, and I don't know why that really stuck with me, because I think probably just on the heels of what happened in Oxford, two minutes feels like it could be an eternity. I mean, just talk about maybe the timing or like it could be an eternity. I mean, just talk about maybe the timing or like, what is really significant in terms of time if there's an emergency on one of our campuses?
So I think the alert system that you have, the Alice button, what it does is it takes over the speakers and it puts out an alert. It basically says, there's, you know, you need to respond. So it's a great alert. It's going to do the job. In other words, what we try to look for in an alert for an active violence situation is we want, we don't want the attacker to be the alert. We want the alert to get out ahead of the attacker. What you have will do that, but what it also does is it essentially, it co-ops the P.A. system. So for two minutes, you're not able to give any other information because that, that alert system essentially takes over the P.A. My understanding is, we didn't test it, but my understanding based on my conversations was it kind of takes over the P.A. system for a couple minutes, and it's, you can't get on there and say anything else. So you wouldn't be able to provide kind of real-time information if it existed over the P.A. Now, you could still do it via, you know, some of your other technologies, cell phones or some of that other stuff, Remind that is often used in the schools, and the radios, obviously. And that's the other thing that you have that, maybe the best radio system I've seen in a school district, maybe ever. Like, most of the time, the radios are terrible. I couldn't get anybody to complain about the radios, which is, that's never happened. So they're really, really good system.
Dr. Ryan, this is, I don't know, maybe a question for both of you. You know, we invested over the pandemic in GoGuardian as something that we use internally to help monitor what's going on online with our students. Is that something that is a tool that could help with this? Is that maybe more of just an internal tool, and maybe you're talking about more external, or how is that?
Yeah, that's internal.
What then would be the next step, maybe, in terms of what you're talking about?
Yeah, GoGuardian is excellent, and it'll do anything that happens within the network, right? But it won't do anything that happens outside in the real world. So if somebody's posting on Instagram and they weren't going through your network, GoGuardian's not necessarily going to catch it. Now, in some cases, it does. So what you have is well within best practice. A lot of stuff that we're recommending is just maybe going a step above and saying, "Okay, we want to have another set of tools should we have a targeted situation where we need to monitor maybe a specific social media account or, you know, a particular situation." So like, for instance, we've done where there's chatter online about a fight at a sporting event, right? When we can monitor that out in the world, you know, it's not happening on the internal network. But GoGuardian is a fantastic tool that you have for your internal stuff.
Say a couple different levels to that. Any district device, every student's been issued one, is monitored 24/7, and if something concerning either self-harm or threat comes through, it comes to our district administrators, goes to that building for their awareness, depending on, you know, what kind of level of interaction, and obviously, an immediate conduit to our liaisons and Oakland County sheriffs. External, the one I'm more worried about, and I think you made reference to, and I appreciate, is just the fact that pretty much every kid has a cellphone, and if they're going to be meandering on weekends and nights, they're probably not on their district-provided Chromebook. They're most likely on their phone, on their Instagram or Snapchat. There is some layer of defense in our cooperative efforts in Oakland County. I think Oakland County, and I don't know what your experience is, is one of the finest counties in terms of overall police, I won't call it coordination with schools, and they have a task force set up specifically to monitor internet chatter with respect to schools, other threats to other governmental organizations and entities. So there is some level of monitoring, but it's kind of like searching the sky, looking for an asteroid sometimes, you know? You have to be in the right place at the right time, looking at the right spot. So I think still, the number one thing as it relates to those comes to the diligence of our community as a whole. I mean, the eyes and ears of the people that live here are the biggest pieces that can kind of bring that information to law enforcement and to the schools, and I just want to keep pushing that.
I would totally agree. Oakland County is, well, it's fantastic in terms of all the different things it does with the schools and the coordination between the different, you know, entities. So you have, you have a lot of resources within there that if you did have an incident, I think you'd be able to go to Oakland County and they could, they could monitor those things for you and give you some additional value. Now, a lot of the social media platforms that kids talk on, they're not open source, so nobody can get in them without, you know, a search warrant or some court order. So like Snapchat, for instance, you can't get into Snapchat. You can't get into some of the, you know, Instagram if it's a closed account. There's a lot of those that you just can't monitor no matter what because they're closed. So you really have to count on your other resources, which one of the things that you do well is you have your Okay to Save program, which I think continue to market and make kids understand that that's an anonymous reporting capability because you get a lot of information via those anonymous reporting mechanisms.
Other questions, comments? Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I appreciated the detail and by building as well, and I think the call for consistent practice is something that I know we're, we're big on here. So certainly appreciate you coming on a, on a holiday. And now we'll switch over to Mrs. Mahoney.
Yes, in conjunction, I wanted to just update the board in regards to our threat and risk assessments that we're partaking in right now. So these two assessments, I just wanted to define what is a threat assessment, and we're operating through C-stag, and what is a risk assessment through the Columbia Lighthouse Project. So a threat assessment determines whether a student poses a threat of violence, and so whether a student has overheard a situation, whether they witnessed a situation, we are, you know, enacting a threat assessment, and then whether the student intent and the means to carry out that threat. Where a risk assessment identifies risk of a student harming themselves, not others, and our goal definitely is to prevent any type of suicide with that risk assessment. In 2018, we had 49 staff members, including administrators and staff, in what was then called the Threat Assessment and Intervention. It is now called C-stag, which is Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines. This is developed by Dr. Cornell out of the University of Virginia. Many districts are utilizing this work, and this really started through the Sandy Hook Promise and has helped schools with Dr. Cornell in providing training for staff. Just this past Friday, 52 staff, including school counselors, school social workers, psychologists, speech pathologists, and central office administrators, and teachers, completed a training, our first round with this current C-stag. And again, it comes in two parts. The first part is five to eight hours. That is done asynchronous, and then on February 11th was the synchronous part, which was four hours virtual learning through a member of C-stag. We're going to round up another. I have 22, including myself, heading into this March, in which we'll start the five to eight hours. I think it opens this Friday, and then completing that, we'll start Part Two designated, I'm hoping, on March 11th for our building administrators. So this includes principals, our assistant principals, our deans, and some central office administrators as well to complete another training on threat and risk assessments. Again, I think as we look at just how we want to sustain and keep updated, it's very important that we, just talking with Stacy today about building a steering committee, that we are constantly being updated in terms of what our counselors, what our administrators are seeing, what are they hearing, and then the latest, you know, research and protocols around threat and risk assessments. I think it's important that we keep consistency across the district, and as we engage with new staff, you know, always this needs to be a top priority that we are updated with what these protocols and processes are. So that's just in light of, you know, the future and how we want to move forward, but right now, we are definitely in the assessment-training situation, so.
Any questions for Mrs. Mahoney?
And just as a recap, this is kind of another arm of our overall programming to support school safety. If you look at from what you just heard first was along with protocols, policies, and the physical plant, actually looking at adults, we've had everybody. This is not new, but we're upping our game to making sure that we have a high-level comprehensive coverage, you know, even expanding what we had before, and also making sure as far as consistency and having best practices across the district for anybody that would be working with children to have that ability and have that team approach to be able to assess any situation. So, you know, we can't really rely on one thing, and when you look at just on top of it, the command coordination efforts we have with Oakland County sheriffs, it's really kind of a broad approach. And this is one, I think, that I feel a lot better from where we were. I thought we were doing well, and as now, I think we're posed on the top of excellence when it comes to threat assessments. Thank you, Mrs. Mahoney.
Thank you. We'll move on to our second presentation tonight. Item 5.2 is our FastBridge Benchmark Data Report. Good evening, Mrs. Osterman.
Good evening. Happy Valentine's Day.
Hello.
So I'm just going to be sharing a really brief report that is from our fall screener data from grades K through 8. And before I do that, I just wanted to share a little bit of background information before we look at the data. So the data that's being shared tonight is a new requirement from the Michigan Department of Education. Public Act 48 requires districts to administer benchmark assessments for this school year in both reading and in math in grades K through 8, and share the fall data at the first BOE meeting in February. So that's tonight. In Clarkston, we chose the FastBridge assessment system this year. In previous years, we used Renaissance Star and iReady. In fact, last year, we used both, depending on the school, and all three of these systems are pretty similar, and they're used to determine if students are making progress towards grade-level expectations in reading and math. The data is primarily used by teachers and interventionists to determine next steps in instruction and to determine growth of students, and I'm very proud to say that we devoted time in October, and then just this last Friday, we devoted six hours for our elementary teachers to dig into data that included this data and other data. I think that that's exceptional. So just as a reminder of our goals that were shared by Nancy in the spring, we have a shorter goal for two years, and we have a longer goal of five years, but basically, we expect every single child in Clarkston to grow and improve, and that's basically what our goals are saying. So this slide shows the screener results for K through 8, reading and math, and just as a note, the Michigan Department of Education requires data be shared based on all students as well as subgroup populations as indicated below and also on the next slide. So the first column is in, the first column is the reporting category, and the next column is in reading, and the third column is in math. So from that, what we see is that based on this one measure, the FastBridge screener, that 60% of our students are likely to achieve reading benchmarks based on this screener, and that again is grades K through 8, and 69% of students are likely to achieve math benchmarks based on this fall screener. So this slide has a breakdown by grade, again, part of the requirement, and this screener data is used with multiple measures to look for learning evidence and determine next steps. So depending on the grade, our teachers have lots of different measures that they use. This is one of them. Grade-level teams look at their data to determine next steps in classroom instruction and determine students that may need additional support or enrichment. So that's where a lot of the time was spent on this past Friday. So also included as part of the public act requirement, we need to share the testing details by mode of instruction. Doesn't seem like it quite fits here, but we need to include that as well. So the testing details by mode of instruction, we had 4,992 total students that completed the reading screener. 742 students were instructed virtually in the fall, and the rest of them were in person. And then we had 4,870 total students complete the math screener. 731 were instructed virtually in the fall, and the rest of them were in person. There are some variations that you'll notice between the number, and that is basically was impacted by attendance and COVID, where there were just some students that couldn't test during the window. We have a certain amount of time that we have to test them. And that is all of the data, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Wendy, as they get into the questioning part, could you discuss just quick and brief about how that data is normed and how comparatively, without giving any specifics for tonight's presentation, how that would compare to county and state data in the same respects, and how that contrasts with maybe some summative data that we'd have at the end of the year for students when they actually finish through our program for that particular year?
Yeah, sure. So screener data, we usually don't necessarily share that as a county, but it is, basically, the screener data is meant to, one of the reasons we use it is to predict our M-STOP score. So M-STOP is based on benchmark, also PSAT in eighth grade, and so the benchmark is basically the Common Core State Standards, the expectations that are at each grade level. So this screener looks at those expectations at each grade level, and it tries to figure out if the kids are on track. So this was in the fall. Are they on track in the fall to meet that end-of-the-year benchmark assessment? And M-STOP and the screener are both based on those same expectations. Both tests are also computer adaptive, which means that as students are taking the test, it adapts to where they are at. So if they answer something correctly, it's going to give them something a little bit more challenging so we can see which kids need enrichment. If they answer incorrectly, it's going to go down and give them something a little bit easier so we can see what kinds of support they need. So based on this data, we're seeing that if kids continue on the same trajectory, that 60% of them should meet that end-of-year benchmark in reading and 69% in math, similar to what we would see on M-STOP. The difference, though, is that this test is K-8, and M-STOP is grades 3 through 7.
It was nice at the point of attack to identify these students earlier to be able to be part of our intervention programs, to bring them up to spec so that we have them all crossing the finish line.
Yeah, and giving a test isn't all that helpful as far as making sure that the student meets the benchmarks, but the fact that we have spent a lot of time digging into this data is very encouraging. We just finished our second round of FastBridge testing, and that was used comparatively with the first set by the teachers, and so they could see which students are staying on the path of trajectory, which ones are maybe needing a little extra support, and which ones are excelling. And I can say that overall, we're staying on track or excelling. So it's great.
Right. I mean, I understand we're looking at data that's now five months old, right? Just because of the requirement of the, of the public act, and so I think for us, it'll be helpful to, once again, look at this at the end of the year, knowing that we've had a year's worth of interventions, that we've had a year's worth of our investment, all of the staff that we invested in with our systems of support. And so I think we're planning, you know, toward the end of June as we wrap up the school year to do another comprehensive look at, at this and see where we stand.
I agree, and I think it would be helpful to get some voices of our new interventionists as well.
Absolutely. So we know there's been a lot more work here, and this is that one snapshot of the very beginning of the year, so.
Madam President, I have a question.
Ms. McGuinness?
Since this tester is a predictor, and I suspect we're only going to then Since this tester is a predictor, and I suspect we're only going to then test our K8 classes next fall, we can't appropriately measure the kindergarteners this year to the kindergarteners next year as the same cohort. How do we gauge the accuracy, I don't know if I want to say accuracy, but the prediction of these students and the interventions that we're instituting are making a marked difference?
Yeah, so what we would do with our current kindergarteners is that we would look at their beginning of the year and their end of the year and see what kind of growth they have had. And I've actually started digging into with the interventionists just the data for their students, so just the data for the students that are receiving interventions in K5. With the next-year kindergarten, what we would do is we would look at where those kindergarteners are compared to our current kindergarteners to see if there's additional supports that we would need, that our current kindergarteners didn't need, or the opposite, if there were enrichments that were needed. So when we're looking at the different grades, we're looking at it two different ways. We're looking at it year-to-year, same grade, to see the differences. And then we're looking at it year-to-year, looking at the same cohort of students to see what growth we have.
Thank you.
Good question.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to action items. Item 6.1 is approval of personnel changes. May I have a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approves the personnel changes as listed in the attached sheets.
Support.
Are there any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item 6.2 is approval of contracts and agreements, and I'd like to handle these separately, please. So may I have a motion for 6.2.1?
I move the Board of Education approves the agreement between Clarkston Community Schools and the Clarkston Paraeducators Association as presented.
Support.
Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item 6.2.2 is approval of the contract for the non-affiliated groups. May I have a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approves the proposed agreement with the non-affiliate groups as presented.
Support.
Any questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item 6.3 is approval of candidate for the MASB Board of Directors. May I have a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education nominate Ms. Angie Smith from Farmington Public Schools.
That motion fails for a lack of second. May I have another motion on the table? We have to vote on this one tonight, guys.
Madam President, I would move that the Board of Education supports Darlene Pomponio of Southgate Community Schools for the MASB directorship.
Support. Is there any question or is there any discussion?
I watched the candidate forum, and I think all four candidates are experienced. I've had the opportunity to serve with Darlene Pomponio. I don't have anything negative to say about her. She's a great board member. I don't have a reason to oppose her candidacy. I would support her. I think in another circumstance, you know, I would advocate for going with our county and supporting folks in our county. But in this case, I feel like I should support the incumbent.
Mr. Need?
I guess that's kind of the way I look at it as well. I think all four candidates had excellent credentials, but you have an incumbent who seems to have done a fine job. I've heard nothing disqualifying about her, so that's why I would support her.
I would just say I appreciate Mr. Hayer, Mr. Need's recommendation for Ms. Pomponio, if I'm saying that correctly. My objective for recognizing and nominating Angie Smith was due to the fact that she is the only candidate that represents Oakland County. Many times in our meetings at Oakland County level, our leadership at Oakland Schools often has heard to be said that it would be nice if we had Oakland County representatives that are legislating the rules that we live under. And so while, of course, this is not a legislator position, that was my main objective for recognizing Ms. Smith for the position, but I also can support the nominated position.
And Ms. McGinnis, I would say, historically, that's definitely been the case. And we do have two current Oakland County representatives on the board, so I think, I feel like some diversity is also in order in terms of geography. But I would agree with what you'd said 100%.
Any other questions or discussion concerning the candidates? I think those are probably the two that are mentioned, so I feel like we're going to be fine either way. Yes.
All right, so the current motion on the floor is to support Darlene Pomponio for the Region Eight representative for MASB. All right, seeing no more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item 7 is our report items. 7.1 is our monthly finance report. Ms. Mary Beth Rogers.
Tonight, you were provided two months' worth of financial data. We were provided December and January, so we could get you as updated as possible. So I'm just going to do the presentation as of January 31, 2022. The budget to actual revenues as of January 31 is 46%, and the budget to actual expenditures are 50%. So you're right, you're doing well, you're right in line. The fund equity dipped, but that's usually due to timing of mainly getting our federal and state reimbursements for expenses we've already done. And so everything seems it's going well. And do you have any questions on any of the two months' worth of expenditure reports, revenue reports, or check registers that were provided to you?
Trustees, are there any questions for Mrs. Rogers on December or January's financial report?
So next month, we should be providing you with first amendment budget.
Okay.
We'll get you updated on that. And then after that, we will move forward with giving you some budgets for next year as we started the process with the governor announced her budget last month, or last week. I think we should start hearing from the other areas of the state over the next couple months, and we should be able to start building that budget for next year, or at least looking at it over the next few months.
Great. Yep, it's budget season. I see no questions or comments from the board. Thank you so much. The detail, I think we're used to the format by now. Thank you so much, Ms. Rogers. Item 7.2 is the NSBA Advocacy Conference Summary. Mr. Hayer, I know you and Mrs. Egan traveled to DC. I'm sorry, in her absence, she's putting this on your shoulders tonight, but if you would like to give the board and our community a review of your time there.
Mrs. Egan provided me 47 slides, of which I will decline to use tonight.
Thank you.
A very detailed update. But first, I'll remind the board, I traveled on behalf of the Michigan Association of School Boards to DC, certainly also representing Clarkston. But I did have the opportunity to engage with the new NSBA Executive Director, get an update on the status and direction of the organization. And I am personally pleased, and I think we as a board can be pleased, that we are moving in the proper direction as a national organization. I do serve now in the National Resolutions and Beliefs Committee, which, as I'm serving, I'm figuring out exactly how to be useful in that position, but that's kind of like a resolutions committee locally, where we take positions on different things and different legislative proactive, what's the word I'm looking like? Positions, standings, philosophies, those kinds of things. So that was very eye-opening. Probably the thing I appreciated most after really a two-year hiatus is networking with folks from around the country. And I always, I've met a few folks from Alaska, and it gives me great comfort knowing that when we have, our bus is running five minutes late on a day like this morning, they're worrying about de-icing some of their planes to get kids moved from school to school. So sometimes what we consider to be difficult is not so difficult in the grand sense. The conference itself, I thought, was excellent, a lot of great speakers. Really, and for those of you who had registered to attend virtually, you may have watched some of the speakers. If you haven't, I highly recommend it. It was a good opportunity to challenge some thinking in terms of perception and how that relates into advocacy and how to represent really all of our students and populations in doing that advocacy work. The focus was not terribly different from where it's been in years past. The special education focus was a lot on modernizing, in addition to the funding piece. The funding piece might have more success at this particular point, so that was a big push, as it always has been. But that modernization piece, I think, is gaining some steam. And that's one of those things where if you keep asking for what the common sense sort of updates are to IDEA, when it actually happens, a lot of times, there's consensus around those items. So that was very positive. E-rate is kind of a perennial issue, especially in, you know, expanding access, you know, and while we think we live in an area that has access, it's not really the case everywhere. You know, what internet speeds and things that I would say the vast majority of our district take for granted, even cellular coverage, like there are many areas that have, you know, bigger challenges with those. Not that we have zero challenges, but a lot of times here, a hotspot fixes most of those issues. And finally, the federal funding that Ms. Rogers has kept us very much in the loop on, just a big push is extending the time that we have to spend those dollars. So they've given us those dollars, and we're using them as best we can, but certainly having a little bit more time to figure out the best way that we can impact our students is a positive thing. And so that was a big push. So if anybody has any questions on any of that, I'd be happy to answer those. My next step in my Resolutions and Beliefs Committee will be at the National Delegate Assembly, which this will be the first one I'm doing in person, because the last two have been online. So that's coming up over spring break.
Was there anyone else who attended virtually that wants to add anything? I don't remember if either of you.
I attended, but there's. I don't have notes in front of me regarding them. I always find, unfortunately, virtual is very, very difficult when you're sitting there working and trying to partake in two different places and be effective. I did listen to a couple of the presentations, but I don't recall any of the titles at this moment.
Same.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
What I do like about the virtual aspect is that the recordings are there, to go back to. I can't tell you how many times I have gone back to, even since Fall Conference, the MASB app, to go back and look at the virtual recordings and/or handout presentations from Fall Conference. So there's been some really great benefits from having virtual aspects to some of these conferences, because, number one, we're saving some trees, not printing all of this stuff like we used to. But the opportunity to go back to these documentations that are out there multiple times is really a great benefit to me.
And along that note, I would say, while Mrs. Egan and I were sitting there, I commented a few times that I was so glad we were in person, because it was much easier for me to engage in person. And I think it's, I put myself in the position of our kids and my kids of, you know, I'm glad we've been, you know, in person and engaging, you know, that way, as I think it's best for most kids. And if it's not best for a certain kid, we have another option. But, you know, there's only so much that, there's only so much you can engage in virtually, and it was a good reminder of that, I think, as well.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you for representing us and for taking the time to go, and it's a big haul. All right, item eight is discussion items. We have none tonight. Item nine is citizen comments. Citizens are welcome to address the board on any topic tonight, and I have three citizens who signed up earlier. Mrs. Osterman, could I ask you to check that blue sheet over there and see if anyone has additionally signed up? No one tonight. Okay. All right, thank you. I'll call you up one at a time, and as usual, through the rules here, you'll have two minutes to address the board. And so we'll start with Steve Seoma. Did I pronounce that right?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I'm trying very hard to do that. Okay, sir, if you'll state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes.
Sure. Steve Seoma, 5109 Wantawha. And I was hoping you could speak about diversity. It was interesting, I noticed somebody else had spoken on it, especially during that presentation earlier, when they were speaking about the achievement of students that is broken down by race. Now, I found it very interesting when, I'm not sure if we're using the same consultant, but over in Oxford, when it came to diversity, inclusion, and equity, DIE, I think it's called, there was this consultant who was of the opinion that race and culture are inseparable, which is strange when they're tying this into their ideas of diversity. I think, looking at this board, do we not have a group of people who have varied backgrounds, skills, traits? You know, you have certain things that you're good at, certain things that you're bad at, and our students, aren't they diverse regardless of their race? So why is it that race is being turned into a factor when it comes to our students? Shouldn't we be providing to them, to the best of our ability, based on who they are as a person, with race being the most shallow part of defining who they are? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Next, we have Tim Parkin.
My great-great-grandfather, Joe Rybell, earned these crutches after taking a lead musket ball through the leg during a Civil War battle fighting against slavery. I'm not sure as to which battle Joe encountered his fatal wound, but it could have been one of the many miserable, forgotten hellholes like Siege of Corinth, Chattahoochee River, Catasau Mountain, which the Michigan 14th Infantry Regiment had the white privilege to experience. What would Joe think upon hearing the words of Oakland County's DEI consultant, Dr. J. Marks? And I quote, "I operate under the premise that the systems in this country and the institutions within the systems were built to be inequitable. They were built on the framework of racism and white supremacy. Our nation is functioning exactly as it was designed to do, and that is to be inequitable." Would Joe have any solace, knowing that his suffering from a festering wound that eventually killed him at 58 was now in vain, knowing that in America today, an African American can go to college, earn multiple degrees, become Oakland County's DEI consultant, earn a six-figure income, and send his daughters to one Oakland County's most elite private schools, literally located less than five miles from where he's buried? Maybe the Clarkston School Board, Dr. Marks and his daughters could swing by Joe's grave after school someday and try some of those restorative practices I've heard about. Kind of makes you wonder who's had more impact on the black community today? Black Lives Matters, DEI consultants, the Clarkston School Board, or my great-great-grandfather, Joe? I hope the sight of Joe's crutches tonight will come back to haunt you every time you mention teach, facilitate, or praise DEI here at Clarkston. By embracing this divisive and hypocritical DI teaching, Clarkston schools have fallen short earning my grandchildren's enrollment, and they are not alone. You can do what you want, but I'll choose the right side of history by honoring real men like Joe, defending and teaching my grandchildren the greatness of the United States of America and what their three times great grandfather did for their country, family, and communities like Clarkston. Freedom.
Thank you for your comments. And finally, tonight, we have Justin Murdock.
Justin, 6381, Snow Apple. I have just a printout of Clarkston's I have just a printout of Clarkston's, Clarkston Community Schools' release of the Oakland County Health Division's announcement about lifting the mask mandates. Just want to highlight a couple of things. The first one, and I'm quoting all these, "Effective February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, masks will be optional on all CCS buildings. This new policy will let families decide what is best for their children." So the first thing about that statement is number one, the policy takes effect the twenty-eighth. Just want to applaud you guys for breaking the policy that's still in effect and the sign that's on the door. Secondly, this new policy will let families decide what is best for their children. Just insinuates that until February twenty-eighth, families don't get to decide what's best for their, for their children. And I'm assuming that at any given moment, that could just revert back and whoever else could decide what's best for our children. Next point, the two-week notice provides local school districts time to prepare their staff board members and families for the upcoming changes and make any necessary district-level decisions and policies. And as far as I know, the only change to removing a mask goes from looking like this to like this. I'm not sure why you need two weeks for that or what the magical date of the twenty-eighth is only other than it's not a leap year, so you couldn't pick the twenty-ninth for it to be more fun. Or not you necessarily, but Oakland County's Health Division. They do still strongly recommend wearing masks while in public indoor settings, including educational institutions. And if we've been wearing masks this whole time because of health and safety reasons, then why are we now all of the sudden no longer caring about the health and safety of the kids by taking their masks off? But I guess choosing both sides of the fence is par for the course at this point. So we'll see what happens with there. It's probably more along the lines of this. One of our state's political parties recently posted that they're not sure where the parents should control what's taught in schools because there are kids mindset is originating. But parents have the option to choose to send their kids to a hand-selected private school at their own expense if they desire. The purpose of public education in a public school is not to teach kids what parents want them, it's to teach them what society needs to know.
Thank you so much.
The problem is society doesn't seem to know.
Thank you for your comments. Item ten is information items. Our next Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Monday, the fourteenth. We will have a workshop meeting at six o'clock, followed by our regular business meeting at seven. We are going to move into a closed session now. We will, no decisions are made in our closed session, so we will return to open session and adjourn from there. So may I have a motion, please, to move into closed session?
I move that the Board of Education move into closed sessions for the purpose of collective bargaining, negotiations, discussions and pending litigation.
Report. Ms. McLean, may I have a roll call, please? Mr. Hire?
Yes.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Nead?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes.
So we are now in closed session. Thank you for coming, everyone. Please take a treat on your way out.